Thank you. Call this meeting to order. Pickle City Commission Meeting, Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. Let us begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Vedder?
Present.
Commissioner Simmons?
Present.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Homan?
Present.
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner DeBrosse from tonight's meeting. I understand he's traveling out of town.
Yes, it was a family event, and we wish his family luck.
All right, moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Guess we'll begin tonight's event with a presentation from Utility Business Office.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Good evening, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight about what's been going on in the Utility Business Office. My name is RJ Monier. I'm the Utility Business Office Manager. I've been in that position since August of 2021. Since then, it's been very eventful down in UBO. We started with an AMI system upgrade in March of '22, which allowed us to start getting electric meter readings electronically, along with water meter readings, and then a complete billing system conversion in December of '22. So these are all very positive changes for our customers and employees, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But first, I'm going to introduce Seamus McNamee. Seamus comes to us from Great Blue Research. He's going to talk to us a little bit about the most recent customer survey that we completed this fall. As a little bit of background, this is the second of two customer surveys that Great Blue's done for us. Kind of similar, but different goals in each one. Both of them were designed to gauge customer preferences and viewpoints on the service they receive from the utilities and from my department as Customer Service Department. The first one was done before our billing system upgrade, so we took the opportunity to ask about what customers would want to see on billing statements and things like that as we moved into that system upgrade. And then this most recent one was to gauge how well we did and also, again, to gauge customer satisfaction with the utility. So, Seamus, we appreciate you being here, and go ahead.
Cool. Thanks so much, RJ. Yeah, so thank you all for having us today. I'm really excited to present these results and share a little bit about what we found in this study. So as RJ mentioned, this was the second of two studies that we did for the city of Pickle. And this was done, as you'll see in a couple of slides, in the November and December timeframe of 2023. I think importantly, as mentioned, you know, one of the reasons you want to do these kind of bookend studies anytime you integrate a new technology is first and foremost to see if that had any impact overall on the service and the interactions individuals are having with the utility. So that was one of the main research objectives that we looked to do in this second of two studies. On the right-hand side of your slide, the areas of investigation. As you can see, we asked quite a bit of information in the study. For purposes of today's meeting, we're really going to just share the top-level results with you, including that overall satisfaction with the different services offered, interactions, and satisfaction with the UBO Customer Service Department. And then dive into a little bit about that AMI and Smart Hub integration and gauge awareness and ultimately adoption of those new technologies. So as I mentioned previously, this study was conducted from, we were calling it the 2023 Voice of the Customer Survey because it was conducted primarily in the fall and winter of 2023. It ran from November 19th through January 3rd. So essentially, once we got back from the holidays, we closed up the survey and started to run the data and reports. Overall, we did have 371 individuals complete the survey. And for the context, that 371 respondents equates to a margin of error of plus or minus 5% at a 95% confidence level. What that basically means is if budgets were infinite and we could do the study over and over again, and we were able to do the study 100 times, basically the results you see on this screen would fluctuate about 5% up or down 95 of those 100 times. For a little bit of context, that's kind of industry best practices. 5% or higher, or 5%, I guess, or lower, closer to zero. So you're right in line there with the 371 surveys we captured. So a little bit about the satisfaction of services to start, and a lot of good news to share. So on this slide, first, we are just showing you the overall satisfaction with electric service, water and sewer, and refuse. So as you can see here, electric came in number one with 83.5% of customers indicating satisfaction. Sewer and water came in second at 78, and finally, refuse came in at 77, right in line with water and sewer. Three key themes on a slide like this that I wanted to share with you all is three things you want to note. First and foremost is anytime you integrate a new technology or make several changes, the reason you do a second follow-up tracker study is to see if that had any impact as a result. And as you can see overwhelmingly across the board, we really saw negative, no negative adverse impacts of that integration of the new technology. Electric service maintained consistency as well as water. And then, in fact, we actually saw refuse increase significantly. So that green arrow on the final bar there just indicates that basically that increase we can determine was statistically significant, which meant, again, if we were to repeat the study over and over again, we would see these increases repeated consistently, which meant we just didn't get, happened to get 371 easier graders this go around than we had back in 2022. So a lot of good news to share. So first and foremost, the consistent on the top two, and then the third increasing. And then the final thing to note that we do not have in this slide that I wanted to share with you all is that since delivering this report, we actually do have a national benchmark now for utility services in the same timeframe in which you conducted the survey. And that national benchmark for electric service for Q4 of 2023, which is about the same time, was 68%. So you actually, for two years now in your study, have outpaced the national average by about 15 percentage points. So a lot of positive notes to kind of kick off the overall findings. Secondly, we dove in a little bit more deeper on electric service, and we have two kinds of questions we always ask in these surveys. First and foremost is the value question. How valuable do you find the services for the cost you pay? And then, secondly, how satisfied are you with reliability? As you can see here, for two years in a row, over nine out of 10 folks who we surveyed indicated that they were satisfied with reliability. And then on the left-hand side of the slide, you can see a majority of folks, just over half, said that there was good value for the cost they were paying for electric service. I think it's important, just to provide a little context to that, because one thing we've seen with a lot of utilities that have done work with us back way before 2022, back to, you know, even into the '90s in some cases, we've seen this value question take a bit of a dip in the recent past, kind of in the mid to late 2022 and into 2023. And that often has to do with just kind of the overall cost of goods increasing, higher, you know, food costs, higher housing costs, all those type of things impacting, you know, how they view their electric rates. So while you may not have actually had a rate increase or any differences in the rates, folks are starting to kind of do the math in their head, well, okay, this costs this, this costs this. All I know is that at the end of the month, I have less money in my pockets. So I wanted to bring that little context, because sometimes you see a 15, and you're like, okay, that means 48% are dissatisfied. But what we've seen, this is very much in line with what we've seen with other utilities, at least in the years that you've been surveying, 2022 and 2023. And then one final satisfaction point overall. So then we asked folks, we had 268 folks in the survey who indicated they had actually called the UBO or had an interaction with them in the past year. We asked them a couple of follow-up questions. You know, first and foremost, as you can see on the left-hand side of the chart, 82.9%, so just about 83% were satisfied with the overall experience of interacting with Pickle's UBO office and that customer service experience. That actually, while not significant, that did actually go up about five percentage points from the last time we surveyed. Again, in thinking about all the new technologies and new ways they could interact, the most important thing is to see that that didn't go down. And then the second thing we asked in all of these surveys, including this one, is about that first contact resolution. So on the right-hand side, we asked folks, hey, when you called or when you interacted with them, were they able to take care of that issue the first time? Did you have to have repeated contact, or did it tend to vary? And as you can see, almost 60% said they was taking care of it the first time. And this is a really important kind of North Star metric to kind of keep in mind, and also something that you all can keep track of. You know, if we don't do another survey for you for a couple of years, because I'll just read verbatim that digging deeper box down the kind of middle of the chart there. And what you can see there is that of the folks who had their issue resolved upon their first contact, almost all, 98.1%, were satisfied with their experience dealing with UBO. Of those folks who had to have repeated contact, that actually fell to 55.6. So rates, reliability, all those things aside, we know that, you know, if you need to engage more than once, schedule a callback, have a second interaction, you basically lose about 40 points in satisfaction right off the bat. And that's something we see consistently, utility over utility, that we have surveyed. So then diving into the actual technology a little bit more, and specifically that Smart Hub and as a sub-bullet, the AMI technology, really promising right off the bat in terms of not-so-early adoption. Like I said, this was in the market for about a year, but we did see in the early going, 85% of folks were aware of the Smart Hub launch in December of '22, and 80% had actually utilized it. Of those folks who had utilized it, 91%, so over nine out of 10, had a good understanding of all the different functionalities of that Smart Hub. Two follow-up questions for those 255 folks who had used it at the time of our survey. 87% said it was easy to use, and almost all, 96%, were satisfied with the overall experience of engaging with the Smart Hub. Specifically diving into some features, these are some kind of lengthy charts, but just really just the key takeaway here is on the right hand, or on the left-hand side, you can see kind of the top three use cases of using the Smart Hub. So that's to pay your bill, being used by over 90% of folks. Second, quite a distant second, but still a second, comparing current month and previous month's bills. And then the third kind of use case is receiving those notifications about upcoming bills. If you look at the corresponding kind of columns or bars on the right-hand side, you can see of those folks who had used Smart Hub for those different functions, the vast majority said that it was useful to them. So over 90% said the bill pay feature was useful to them. Over 80% said comparing the bills was useful to them, viewing the usage, and then close to 80, just under 80, 79.6% felt that the notifications were useful to them as well. Like I said, as a sub-bullet of that, we dove into the AMI of the folks who were aware of Smart Hub. They, 61% were aware that there was leveraging the AMI technology to provide that usage data to them, and about a quarter had, at the time of the survey, actively sought out the information from their AMI through the Smart Hub. And of those folks who had, I think the biggest takeaway here on this slide is of the folks who had actually engaged with that AMI usage, 91%, so over nine out of 10, again, said it was easy to use. But most importantly, thinking back to that value question earlier, almost 60% said that it gave them the tools they needed to actually make some adjustments to their consumption, just under 60% at 58.6%. And then one final thing, as we mentioned, you know, that high adoption rate of that bill pay through the Smart Hub. When we asked about some other bill pay methods, we saw a similarly high adoption rate. But one thing we did see is that when we asked the final question on bill pay and that likelihood to engage with a kiosk or, you know, some standalone, out of office or off-office hours, ability to pay your bill through a kiosk. I think because so many folks were satisfied with the way they were paying their bill up to that point, less than a third indicated a likelihood to use that kiosk. So with all that in mind, I wanted to just kind of share our contact information. If you were paying attention to the areas of investigation and the slide numbers, like I mentioned, there's far more data than we were presented here today, but we really wanted to share with you all really the highest-level overview and share the good news about how well the Smart Hub was adopted and how that had the positive impact on satisfaction ratings. If you do have any questions, happy to take them now. If not, the full team that worked on this project, all the contact information is there, and we are happy to answer any questions via email at any point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seamus.
Cool, appreciate it.
So a couple of takeaways that I'll mention here quickly. So why do we do this? It's very important to measure customer preferences, know how we're doing as a customer service department, how the utilities are serving their customers. I want to highlight that last kiosk question. We asked that question on both surveys, the first and the second. Coming into the conversion, I knew that that was a capability that NISC offered. I thought that it would be an exciting opportunity, something that customers would want. We probably would have gone down the path of installing one. The first survey had a similar results where it was not said to be utilized much, and the second survey confirmed that. So things like this are important for operational decisions like that. We obviously will not prioritize that direction because of things like that. So another thing that we've, we didn't focus on in this high-level summary is how customers want to be communicated with, and that was a large part of the survey. We have a lot of good data on that, and we'll action that with our communication department. So the electronic communication desire went way up, and so we will act on that as well. And then, final thing I'll highlight from the survey is the refuse satisfaction going way up. I think it's important to know things like that. That first survey, there's a couple of reasons I think that happened. That first survey was done shortly after the automated trucks were introduced, and there was a location change, or pickup changes, and route changes, and rates introduced. And I think the growing pains are still getting worked out. And the second survey was kind of after things had settled in, and, you know, guys out there being consistent and professional and doing the things. And also, our, my department took over customer service calls, so we were able to distribute those calls and open orders and do things like that. So real important to know that. So next, I just want to do a quick, high-level overview of UBO. We've got five CSR1s, two CSR2s down there. We're responsible for all the billing and phone calls. We took 16,415 phone calls and 23, 86,000 over-the-counter check and cash payments. So people are still coming into our office, but at a much slower pace than previously. And then we had that NISC conversion, the Billing System Conversion, at the end of December, or the end of '22. From that, just want to highlight a couple of things about Smart Hub. These things did not exist before the conversion do now. So great communication improvements. We can email and text and call you if you want that about bill notifications, when it's due, when it's past due, when it's about to be due. You can sign yourself up for auto-pay, one-click paperless billing, real-time balances. So what you see on Smart Hub is what I see at my desk, real-time payment posting. You're able to see your electric and water use data, electric down to the 15-minute interval if you care. Very powerful bill comparison tool, so why is my bill higher this month? You can go and pull the two months in, look at heating degree days, look at the temperature. We graph it with temperature, which is very important for figuring things out like that. Able to see and print off bill statements. We also offer a pay-by-cash method now, so you can utilize Speedway, CVS, and Walmart. Take your app in there, they scan a barcode, you can give them cash, it posts right to your account. Really nice feature. And then, those were customer-facing. I want to highlight some of the internal improvements that NISC provided. We're able to send automated phone calls, new billing statement with color billing statement. We break down your use in both water and electric with temperature. We send envelopes with your bill now. I think that's a great improvement. Opened up the opportunity to have a third-party customer service company. So if you called my office right now, you would get a live person. They'd be able to answer questions about your account, take a payment over the phone for you. That's 24/7, so that we have an integration with their system. We prorate base fees now, some mail improvements. So we no longer truck the bills over across the street to the Pickle Post Office, which goes a Columbus, which goes who knows where else. We can track mail down to the piece now. There's a barcode on those bills. And then, the day that we converted to NISC, we went paperless on all of our work orders. So the way that the work distributes to the electric distribution department, water, it all happens paperless now. They get an alert on their iPhone and can take pictures, send it back to the office, and so it's been great. So with that, that's all I have. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight about UBO and...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Smart Hub is something else. I was looking at mine as you were speaking, as he was speaking, and doing a comparison between last, this month and last year this month, and it's a nice, useful tool. So you guys are doing a good job. I appreciate you. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda.
Approval of the minutes from the April 9, 2024 Regular City Commission Meeting.
Any questions from Commissioners? Any questions from citizens? About the consent, the approval of the last minutes? No, this is about, this is just approval of the minutes from the last, through the consent agenda, okay.
I'd move the approval of the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Next, we're into old business.
Mayor, I would like to move that we amend the agenda by adding a work session to discuss an ordinance to regulate burning activities upon city property owned by the city of Pickle.
Need a second for that?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor to amending the agenda? Say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So a little bit of background, in case anybody would like a copy, there's a draft ordinance in the back if you want to read along. Some background on why we're doing this is obviously because of the battery burning that has consumed so much interest and time of the city as of late. We had a multi-part plan to address that. So part of that plan was looking backward. How did the battery burning happen? We did that by forming the Investigation Committee, which had their first meeting last week, which went great. And so while they are working on figuring out how we got to this point, we also wanted to look to the future and prevent this from ever happening again. To prevent this from ever happening again, we had two steps that we were initially going to be pursuing. That first step was to remove the specific permission for Bowling Green to conduct research experiments on city-owned property. We did that a few weeks ago, and BG is no longer allowed to conduct research experiments out there, which repairs the current contract so that they can't do that anymore. However, that leaves open the gap right now where potentially, if the commission decided, or a future commission decided, they could just re-enter and do a brand-new contract, and we'd just be right back where we started. So I want to make sure that we can't ever do that again, or that some future commission can't ever do that again either. And to do that, I'm going to propose this ordinance, which would essentially outlaw the kind of burning of experimental and exotic materials that we saw out there and make it so that that can't happen again, and that it would be illegal for the city to enter into a contract. So to do that, this is a draft ordinance. So right now, we're in a work session, and so we're just going to be kind of discussing amongst ourselves. I'm going to be presenting this to my fellow Commissioners, allowing them to ask me questions about it, maybe we can make some modifications. This is not a first reading. If all goes swimmingly, we hope to have this as a first reading at the next commission meeting. And then for citizens, if you would like to comment or suggest anything on this, the public comment at the end of the meeting would be your time to do that. So let me just start reading through this. So the ordinance, "An ordinance to regulate burning activities upon property owned by the city of Pickle. Be ordained by the commission of the city of Pickle, of the state of Ohio. A majority of all members elected thereto concurring that. Section 1, the city of Pickle shall not allow the use of city-owned property for the destructive testing of batteries, equipment, or devices of any kind, including but not limited to deflagration testing. And, section 2, the city of Pickle shall not allow the use of city-owned property for the intentional setting of uncontained fires, defined as openly burning fires not mediated by a regulated tool, device, or appliance which has been designed to safely manage and control a combustion reaction, except for the purposes of cooking, heating, recreation, sanctioned pyrotechnic displays, city maintenance, operation, and construction activities, emergency response activities, and for the training and/or certifying of firefighters or rescue personnel participating in programs accredited under chapter 4765 of the Ohio Revised Code, where such accepted activities are otherwise compliant with all applicable laws and regulations. And, section 3, training fires intentionally set on city-owned property shall consist exclusively of Class A, Class B, and Class K fires. And, section 4, training fires intentionally set on city-owned property shall have fuel sources consisting exclusively of organic materials and petroleum products, excluding hard plastics, synthetic rubbers, and materials that are reasonably likely to result in a Class C or Class D fire, and excluding materials with a hazmat material classification level, which is not either Class 2, Class 3, or Class 4, and not exceeding a fuel volume that is reasonably likely to result in an unattended burn time of longer than six hours. And, section 5, training fires intentionally set on city-owned property shall have in attendance no less than one firefighter who is authorized by the state of Ohio with a certificate issued under section 4765.55 of the Ohio Revised Code during the entirety of the burn from the time of ignition, and who shall be responsible for declaring the burn fully extinguished at the conclusion of the burn. And, section 6, training fires intentionally set on city-owned property shall be compliant with the standards outlined in the National Fire Protection Association document, NFPA 1403, standard on live-fire training evolutions, where not otherwise specified by applicable laws and regulations. And, section 7, any data captured or recorded during training fires intentionally set on city-owned property shall be considered part of the public domain, regardless of the entity conducting the test, and no data shall be considered the proprietary property of or for the exclusive use by any organization or entity." And, well, that's all we got.
Yeah.
So would my, do my fellow Commissioners have any comments or questions?
I think it's pretty thorough. It started out, was suggested as a resolution, thought it should be stronger and make it into an ordinance, which is what you've taken by the rain. We don't want a repeat performance of what had happened before. So this is a second step in the right direction.
Someone's going to ask. What's a Class A, Class B, or Class K fire?
Ooh, you know, I used to know that when I was writing this, and I probably should have brought that up. There is in the notes section here, there's links to what those mean. Class A and B fires, I believe, are, Class A, I think, is just regular solid materials, like woods and things. And I think B is liquids, and, so liquid petroleum.
Yeah.
And K is anything to do with the kitchen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so Class C is electrical fires, and D is explosive fires, which are very specifically prohibited.
Paul, would you want that to be in the ordinance?
No, the language doesn't have to be there, but someone's going to ask.
Someone's going to ask.
Someone's going to ask.
Someone's going to ask.
So I figured I'd be the one to ask.
Thanks for asking.
And...
I'm good.
The other part which restricts, so Class A, B, and K fires may be resulting from hazardous materials, which is why I also included in there a provision that excludes any hazardous materials. which is why I also included in there um a provision that excludes uh any hazardous material that is not a class two, class three, or class four. Um, now you might be asking, why would you include any hazardous materials in there? Well, regular materials are also classified into the hazmat classification. So, um, that helps resolve that. And that one I do not remember as clearly off the top of my head, but I believe that uh class two, class three, and class four are also similarly hardwood products, uh, and that such material, and also petroleum-based products. Um, I know for sure it does not include radioactive products.
I do know that, um, and I've been, since the last commission meeting, I've been looking online about, um, doing some research on uh the whole deal of pallets.
Mm-hmm.
And while they say most pallets in America are heat-treated, there are still some that are chemically treated, and those are not safe to burn, and we should call that out, that not, that no wooden material in here uh shall knowingly, that has uh been chemically treated, shall knowingly be burned.
We don't burn any of those anyway.
Mister, the, the permit that the city will receive will not permit the burning of chemically-treated pallets.
Yeah, uh, and chemically-treated pallets are stamped with a, uh, the, a particular chemical would be uh methyl bromide, I believe, and those pallets would be stamped with an M B. Um, in fact, all, all pallet standards uh really highly suggest, and I think it's enforced to a certain extent, marking the pallet with how it was treated. Um, and so those methyl bromide ones would be, have an M B on it, um, which would make them not compliant with uh, with, I believe, the, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Patrizio, that would make it not compliant with the E P A uh permit, is that correct?
That's correct. R A P is, we're going to require that, or is requiring that you, we only burn uh non-treated pallets, so it would be heat-treated.
So, the, the goal with this was to not write a, a novel um for every possible thing, and so there are a lot of other uh laws and permitting process from uh the city, state, national level uh that I believe can create enough of a net over top of this, that this will help shore up the gaps that currently exist within that net. Um, though, uh, if we find more gaps, um, we can certainly add them as additional sections. And, I guess, uh, to Mister Obador or for Miss Patrizio, if we could investigate whether or not the language as written would uh definitively, or additional state laws or regulations would prevent the burning of M B pallets. Thank you.
I find it interesting that we're talking about sanctioned pyrotechnic displays. If you live in my neighborhood, we have non-sanctioned pyrotechnic displays. And I, and I understand that that could, could potentially fall into what criminal kind of activity, or at least code violations.
So, so two interesting parts on that. So firstly, that's in there because there was uh an earlier draft of this may have accidentally outlawed our Fourth of July fireworks display. Um, I wanted to make sure that that did not happen. Um, also important to note, um, this would have absolutely no impact on your uh neighbors. Uh, this is very specifically for city-owned property. Uh, so anybody uh at home, talking about your private business, your uh place of residence, this has absolutely zero to say about what you burn on your property. Now, that's not to say that it grants you immunity from all the other laws and regulations that are in effect, uh, but this law is very narrowly focused at uh preventing the city, the city from doing something to the citizens. It's not meant to prevent the citizens from uh acting as they, they normally would. Um, and I know that it had been suggested at previous meetings that perhaps we expand this and make some kind of all-encompassing thing that would ban backyard barbecues and that sort of stuff. Um, but this very specifically does not do that. There's no uh further questions from my fellow commissioners. Um, again, I would encourage uh everybody, there's a copy of this in the back.
Read it.
Yep. Take a look at it. Um, please email me any suggestions or comments on it. Um, and I hope over the course of the next three weeks before our next meeting, uh, I can work with uh the chief and the fire chief and uh Mister Patrizio, and we can get this finalized for a first reading um at the next, the next commission meeting.
Sure.
Thanks for your work on this.
Yep, thank you.
That's a lot of work.
That's excellent.
It was a lot of work. Alrighty, um, I guess I'll motion to close the work session.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to close the work session, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, back to old business. Ordinance number O dash two dash twenty-four, third reading.
An ordinance to make appropriations for the city of Pickwa, Ohio for the year twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, this ordinance is to adjust appropriations in certain line items of the budget. This is the third and final reading, and um I'll take any questions.
I think you did a good job of going over the specifics in the earlier readings, and so I'm, I'm comfortable to move ahead.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Um, there was one item in here, and I've been asked by a couple of different folks to uh ask about it. I'm trying to find it. This is such small print.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go blind.
It's even smaller than the one I put out.
At least.
Um, no, there was something about um a, a very large uh change for lock nine. And I was just wondering, um, if I can still even find where that is.
Is there anything in there about that, Jerry?
Uh, let's see. You know what line, uh, what section that is?
That's what I'm trying to find.
Okay.
I had it just a moment ago.
In section uh four, there's a change of sixty-seven thousand.
That's capital city, no, this one's, oh, addition to lock nine, yep.
Where's that?
That was uh section four.
Is that the one you're talking about?
Um, yeah, I guess so. Oh, here's the other one that I found was actually in section thirty-five. Change orders to lock nine project, uh, restrooms, and it's like three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, okay. Uh, that was, um, I'd have to get back to you on the specifics of that.
I, I can speak to that.
Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. So, in the original scope of work, there were no restrooms um in the park project, and through re-engineering and some cost savings and moving money around, uh, simply we came up with, um, because of the reduced amount of the park through the, the value engineering, it covers the cost, uh, the expense of the restrooms that were not uh considered in the original design.
Doesn't increase the budget at all?
It, it shouldn't increase the budget of the park from the original budget. It should be contingencies that were set aside.
So if I understand correctly, you were initially authorized a certain amount with a margin for error, and this is just dipping into that margin for error?
Yes, that's my understanding is the contingency, this is just taking the money and moving it over. So, all the money for the original park funding didn't anticipate the, the contingencies, and then that money was moved over.
So at the start.
We can get a breakdown for you.
Getting the money from what was under budget before.
Mm-hmm.
We'll get you, we'll get you a breakdown, though, that.
In bigger font, right?
Definitely, Reader's Digest.
So, and then I guess just to further clarify, this was kind of anticipated at the start of the project, that there may be unforeseen things, and this is just a, now that we've actually done the project, this is a specific unforeseen thing that's done dipping into that.
Correct, and the contingency deals with a lot of the underground, you know, soil conditions, change in design of footers and things like that. And so as the project was managed along the way, they came to realize that we would have enough to go ahead and construct the restrooms.
Alright. Any other questions?
Nope. That was it.
Questions from citizens?
Jeff Grimes, ninety-three hundred, State Route sixty-six. So, you guys are on the third reading, but you don't have breakdowns for how much it's actually going to cost us. So how much are we into lock nine now for? How many millions?
It's, that's not a part of this appropriation.
The, the restrooms are not part of lock nine?
The breakdown of the total cost of the park is not a part of the appropriation package.
So I must have misunderstood. What are the restrooms being used for, then?
Again, that's just a, it's a transfer of money. This isn't a, this isn't a uh, uh, resident, or I'm sorry, this appropriation does not have to do with the park itself and the total funding. The total funding was authorized by the commission. It's simply moving money around to complete the park.
And how much money are we moving around?
Three hundred.
Three twenty-seven, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Three hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Sorry, yeah, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for restrooms? And where would these restrooms be located at?
The restroom, the foundation's already in place. It's to the left of the performance pavilion.
Three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for one restroom, two restrooms, three restrooms?
Two restrooms in a service, uh, service area to uh support the performance pavilion.
Jeff?
And who will, who will take care of these restrooms?
Park staff, but that's an operations question. It's nothing to do with the appropriation.
So I was just wondering, will they be um twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? Um, who's going to control the um cleaning, the um stocking of the paper towels and toilet paper? That's always going to be the city, too. So there'll be additional expenses?
There'll be operating expenses that are a part of the parks department, and they'll be on automatic timers, so they'll lock in the evening and open up in the morning.
Uh, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars doesn't sound like much to you guys, but it sounds like a lot to me for two bathrooms. That means, um.
That's the other contingent. That's, that's, that includes other contingencies, I'm sure, but we can get a breakdown of that number.
There, there were, Jeff, there was in here, if I am looking at it, um, it's restrooms, and it also says railings. I'm not sure what they mean by railings, if that's like going down the steps. Um, but also it says, oh man, it says I need new glasses, that's what it says. Uh, wall, is that removal? Wall removal?
I'm just, I'm just suggesting that since we don't know everything that's going on right now, maybe we should get another breakdown and maybe table this as, uh, so we know exactly what it is. I did not get a, any paperwork on how we're breaking this down. That's why I'm asking, so. Um, if we don't have the figures in front of us, then I don't think that you guys should pass it. But you probably will anyways.
And just to be clear, to keep on the construction schedule, moving, moving the funds around to make sure that we can make our uh, our payments on the, the contractor's work, that's why we have this in front of you. And so the budget amount was authorized by the commission for the project. This is simply reimbursing the accounts.
And that original budget was passed by the previous commission, right? I mean, that would have been a year, two years ago?
Year and a half ago, yeah.
Year and a half ago, okay, yeah. So they, they initially authorized, here's a big bucket of money to spend on lock nine, and then now that you have made some progress in the project, you are just telling us we're spending it, that bucket of money that was already approved, we're spending it on specific things. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from citizens?
Hearing none, I would move the approval of uh, uh, ordinance number O two twenty-four uh for the third reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is new business. Ordinance number O dash three dash twenty-four, first reading.
An ordinance to adopt chapter ninety-nine, Pickwa Historic Preservation Ordinance.
Love the microphones. Good evening. I'm Kyle Hinkelman, the Community Services Director. Um, at ordinance three twenty-four this evening is an ordinance uh to adopt chapter ninety-nine, the pis, the Pickwa Historic Preservation Ordinance. Um, this we had spoken with at the previous uh commission meeting about uh in a work session, uh, and this has been uh reviewed by the Planning Commission, and they did recommend uh in a five-to-zero vote uh to recommend approval to the um city commission uh this evening. So, uh, chapter ninety-nine, um, as we discussed previously, uh, really is the uh ability of the city to create uh our C L G, our Certified Local Government uh ordinance, which will authorize uh the city to apply for grants, uh, and to do a couple other items on the list, um, of a C L G community. We are not, as I noted previously, the only community that has gone through this process. Uh, communities like Tip City, Dayton, Van Wirt, Lima, Springboro, and a, and a a lot of others have gone through this process for a number of different reasons. But really, the three main reasons that uh Pickwa is looking to do this, uh, deals with the ability for the city to um create landmarks within our own community. Uh, so we, a, as we noted at the last commission meeting, we have a number of already designated historic landmarks in our community, as well as the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District within our community, uh, and those are designated on the National Register of Historic Places. This ordinance would authorize the city to create a local registry where we can then designate properties onto our local registry. And when those properties are designated, they were then authorized to apply for these grant programs. So, again, that, uh, this ordinance would, uh, the language exists, would create the district, create the process for landmarking, as well as uh create a board, which will be the next ordinance, but it creates the establishment of the City Historic Review Commission. And as we will get to, you will see the board composition was modified based on comments received uh from the city commission as well. This language does allow for exemptions. It does allow for alternative equivalents, things which are required by the State Historic Preservation Office uh within the regulation. And again, it also then has enforcement mechanisms if people do not follow those rules once they are put, uh, once they make the determination to put themselves uh as a landmarked structure. I want to note that this ordinance does not do anything to change the regulations or rules on those that already exist in the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District. Uh, all this does is really shift around some of the regulations that exist from our development code, which the future ordinance we will speak about this evening touches on, but it centralizes it into a central chapter, chapter ninety-nine, uh, which uh explains the entire process, explains how we would do all of these different items based on the way that the State Historic Preservation Office wishes us to lay it out. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions on chapter ninety-nine. It is.
Alright, I got a phone call today from Don Smith.
Sure.
And he was concerned, and I spoke to another person who lives in the Caldwell Historic District. With the creation of this district, will people who currently live there have to submit to a board if they wanted to change the color of their house?
So the same standards that exist today, so currently, um, our historic landmark overlay district would require someone to get approval for certain changes. So demolitions, construction, major changes, uh, but paint are all administrative approvals, uh, and that will stay the exact same. So no, no code change or regulatory change, uh, other than, uh, if, if they get to the point where they are required to get approval, it will no longer go through the Planning Commission. It would go through this separate body, the City Historic Review Commission, who would be authorized to approve it.
Are there any homes right now that would not be subject to that process of going through the Planning Commission that after this passes would suddenly become a subject to the Historic Planning Committee?
No, nothing changes at all. And actually, this language clarifies the exception portion, so if somebody has a, what they believe to be a nonhistoric uh structure, there is a there is a clearer process for them to be exempted from any regulations to protect them even further.
How, I'm trying to figure out how to ask this. So the Planning Commission, I think, kind of, they, they look at it and they kind of make a determination based off the strict reading of the code, and then sometimes they kind of put in a little personal opinion on it as to whether or not they think it needs to be strictly to the law or strictly to the code or not. Is that the same sort of process with the Historic Committee, or is they, do they have a different process? Is it still going to be here in this room, or is it going to be, is it something at the county level?
No, the, the board will be appointed by the city commission. So there are five members of the community who are, the goal is to have those people have some skills to deal with historic properties, so whether that's an architect, an engineer, or somebody, you know, an archaeologist, or somebody that has some, some different background to be able to hopefully inform those decisions.
What about a commissioner that likes architects?
The sixth member would be an ex officio city commission member who would not vote, but would be on the board as potentially a recommending or knowledge gatherer. But again, that board would hear and review the cases similar to the way the Planning Commission does, but the language and the exact way that they would review that is based on the State Historic Preservation Office standards for review.
Will they also be able to advocate for and seek out grant opportunities?
The board? Yes, I mean, there is nothing that would stop the board. The only obligation of the board is to meet four times a year. They will obviously hear additional cases if they came before the board, but they are obligated to meet four times a year. So at those quarterly meetings, the agenda likely would cover the landmark requests and then any other requests that came before them, or if they had their own interest in modifying the boundary or working with the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District to do certain specific items, which I know as this has come up, there's been a number of people who have reached out and said, maybe there's ways that the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District can change through this process, and that certainly could be a conversation as we move forward with this ordinance.
Is there, so you said that they would be going with the, what, State Historic Preservation Guidelines? Is that, or did I miss that?
So the State Historic Preservation Office, CHIPO, is the body that approves the language, and so we had hoped prior to creating this ordinance that we could utilize our existing language and not have to kind of recreate the wheel. But after having them review it, they have a checklist, they looked at it, and they felt a separate ordinance is the appropriate way to go. So that's why the language exists as it does, is after their review, they felt certain language needed to be changed to meet their expectations for an ordinance that will qualify under the Certified Local Government standard.
So the, the CHIPO guidelines right now, they, they might be agreeable, but you know, those, that's a state organization that we don't have control over, maybe they, maybe they change in the future. Is this Historic Preservation Committee, are they bound to CHIPO? Or are they able to kind of, if they deem it, well, you know, the local, that local plot of land, it doesn't really need to be purple, and they can kind of go rogue off of those CHIPO guidelines? Or are they strictly bound to the CHIPO guidelines?
So the guidelines provide us a way to get grants. So if we determine as the city that some of these guidelines don't fit for us, we certainly can change them and we are authorized to do so. CHIPO doesn't have any control over our ordinance. We can craft it however we wish. I would just state that if we do that, there's a potential that when we go and ask CHIPO for money, that they may say, I'm sorry, your regulations don't meet what we want, and therefore you don't qualify. So some of it is, yes, I understand the concept of potentially where we have issues. Really, the only time that CHIPO will be involved is if and when grant making or grant requests are being made. I do believe there's probably still a lot of flexibility in that process where even if our code is not exactly the way they'd love it, that, that we still would be able to get those grants.
So if somebody wanted to take their grand Victorian and paint it purple, which is probably not part of the historic code, right now, they would go through the Planning Commission and ask for permission, right?
No.
No?
So paint, and it would depend, but, but no, they would not be off, they would not need to go through the Planning Commission. It would likely be an administrative approval.
Okay. And then, can you, can you explain what administrative approval would mean in that context then?
It would just be a staff approval, so I mean, it would be a, a request and an approval, or potentially it's not even needed.
Now, if we pass this ordinance, then, then what would that process look like?
Nothing would change.
Nothing would change, okay.
Nothing changes.
Kyle, I understand after talking with you on the phone that in addition to the Caldwell Historic District and the downtown district, there are other places that might also be included in a historic preservation, and I, and you know, I talked about the Hans Pavilion as, as one of those, and there may be others in town as well.
Correct. So any property within the city bounds could be added to the local landmark registry. It doesn't have to be in the boundary that is designated. The current boundary that is designated just includes the two existing historic districts that we have, the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District and the Downtown Historic District. But these properties do not have to be within that bound. You could, we decided, we could designate a property as a local landmark. There's, there's just a process to go through. We would designate it, and then it would be available to be future consideration for the two types of grants that are eligible for the CLG, which is the local CLG grants and then the state historic tax credits.
Apologies in advance for the dumb question. So my guess is you're going to go, yeah, it would be, but just to be clear, if, so you've got the two districts that are down here that are going to make this one larger area, and let's say, oh, way up at the top of the hill, we say we decided to make Sunset Meats a historical landmark. I, I think it should be, but that's just me. Would, something like that would be kind of like an island in and of itself a little bit? I mean, we wouldn't have to expand the whole...
No, the boundary is not the important part of the registry. The boundary determines everything inside of it being in the registry, but again, we can make local landmarks as individual structures.
Like Mopar.
I thought that's what you were saying.
That do not have to be within that boundary.
Yeah, Mopar.
Mopar would be...
And I will note again, I mean, we can also, as part of that process, the boundary can be changed at any point in time. So if in the future it's determined that there's a block that really needs to be added, or as some of the conversations that I've had about the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District boundaries, there's a potential there over the next, you know, year or so to work through some of the more onerous process of getting the state or the federal government to change the historic boundaries of the Pickwa Caldwell District, which again, that can be modified through our process as well.
Under our current process, can we adjust those boundaries to kind of annex or consume buildings or properties that weren't originally a part of the district at the, even at, at the opposition of the owner? You know, can they forcibly become part of the Caldwell Historic District under our current setting, situation?
I don't know if they could be forced. I know the overlay district exists, but I don't know the process of how they were put in. So I, I don't have the history on whether they were forced in or whether they were agreed to be in.
Would, would passing this change that? Would passing this allow them to then be forcibly declared a historic property in some manner?
I would say again, even if they're in the district, if they're a property that is nonhistoric, they would be exempt. This process is very clear to protect the people who have structures who are not, who believe their structure is not historic, as well as alternative methods, which the state requires. So if you decide you want to do something, but you don't want to meet the strict guideline, there are now alternatives that you are, are allowed to utilize, even for those that have decided to be in the district. So to answer your question as roundabout as I possibly can, I mean, I think, I, I think there's nothing different in this language than there was previously. I don't believe that anyone would be forced to do anything. This would be, the intent of this is to provide a flexible opportunity for someone to make a determination to enter and accept all the regulations, and then hopefully get funding for something if they chose to go after it.
Could you, for the next reading, do some research for me and find out what, what happens if somebody doesn't want to be historic and they suddenly get overlapped? What's their process? Maybe somebody who's currently historic who wants to exit being historic, or somebody who has a potentially nonhistoric building in that region that wants to become historic, and kind of give us some, maybe a flow chart of different ways that they can enter the process and different ways that they can exit the process. That way that we have some, some clarity on what's going to happen and we don't have surprises down the road.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You guys done on what?
Yeah.
Citizens, anybody from, make a comment?
Melanie Walker, five-two-six North Wayne Street, which is in the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District. And we also have two buildings in the downtown that are also in the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District. I'd like to address yours as far as the color and that, if you wanted to paint your house purple. Right now, in the Caldwell Historic District, we do not have to go to anyone for any of that, but as a downtown business, even though I'm in the Caldwell District, I do have to go to planning and zoning to get approval of my colors and that. So I have been doing a lot of reading and that, and the, the chapter ninety-nine, today's the first time I read that, under the certificate of appropriateness, and I'd asked the Community Service Director, which is Kyle, you know, and according to this, if I want to pressure wash my house, I'm going to have to have approval from him for that.
Is that right?
That is not correct. Pressure washing your house?
How about section, it is section four F.
Under certificate of appropriateness?
Yes. Repair of exterior surfaces such as chalking, masonry, repainting, and non-abrasive cleaning. I would assume that power washing is non-abrasive cleaning.
And that's a great question. I mean, again, what I would say, I would say is that this language is the exact language, literally word for word, of what exists today in our current code. So I don't believe that anyone has ever been required or requested to do that, so I don't anticipate that ever to be the future, but maybe that's an opportunity to make this cleaning.
I think that there's a lot of things like that in here that need to be addressed.
Understood. And again, I mean, the, the, the Planning Commission has reviewed this. The, the goal of that process is, the language is the same, nothing has changed. So if there are issues with the existing language, then obviously there's a conversation to be had about that.
Melanie, can you pick out all the instances that you think...
Well, yeah, here's another one, the same thing, section four J. Temporary installation of lights, art displays, sign, or decorations for a period of less than sixty consecutive days. According to that, I have to go to you to get approval for that. So I'm doing a sale at my downtown business, and I'm putting signs up in the window. I'm going to have to go to you to get approval. If I'm putting special lights up, we're doing something in the month of June, and we're putting purple and green lights up in the window, I have to go to you to get approval for that, according to what this paper says.
Is that right?
Correct, and that is existing today, and again, what I would tell you is it exists today. Now, whether or not that the city is enforcing that, or whether we should be enforcing that, I think is a, is a valid question. But again, the language that exists there already exists. So it's, I will admit, the language has changed. It's changed from, we're going to get to that, but it's changed from Development Director, which is what it used to say, but since we don't have a, a title Development Director anymore, when I was hired in January, the Community Services Director took over the Planning and Zoning Division, and so therefore, the language was changed to that title, but it's intended to be whoever is in charge of the Planning and Zoning Division. With that said, I, at least in the four months I have been here, have yet to do any of those things, so I can't say to you, I would anticipate that the intention was that, so that's certainly something we can look through.
Can you point out all the instances that you would like to see changed?
Well, the, the other thing was in-kind replayer, replacement of existing siding doors, roofs, gutters. If you went and looked at my house and you went, that I was going to repair my gutters, if you went upstairs in my attic, I have wooden gutters in my house. The wooden gutters are still in there, and I'm not saying, Kyle, that you would do it, but I have been in instances where someone on one of the boards would have maybe said, hey, it's wooden, put it back wooden. So that's a worry.
It sounds to me like the majority of your concerns are really with four, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, like just the portions under four?
Yes, the certificate of appropriateness.
So I guess what I would ask...
Thirty seconds.
And what I would ask, I guess, is if, if it's acceptable to the commission. I mean, I'd be happy to meet with you, you know, sometime this week, and I could take all your comments, and I will make sure they're addressed.
This is the first reading. This might be a really good opportunity to examine the wording in here and not only change it here, but change it in any other appropriate documents and, and get those changes approved by whichever bodies need to do it, whether it's the Planning Commission, because particularly with...
Thanks, Melanie. We'll, we'll address your issues, I promise.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Did you have anything else before you sat down? Any last things?
Five minutes, okay. Thank you.
No, I was going to say five minutes.
Kyle, are we, are we able to, it, it sounds like there's a lot of language that was copied from the old ordinance or the old code that's kind of vestigial, stuff that was never enforced, but you know, potentially a vindictive-coded officer in a few years might be able to enforce on these things. Could we snip some of those things out where these are things that have never been enforced, never really used, never really needed, start snipping those out? Take this opportunity, if we're going to re-centralize everything, let's snip off the vestigial parts that aren't needed. Can we do that, or is that going to screw up what you were talking about with the getting grants and things?
I don't think that there's any expectation of the way that it exists. I think the concern would be that when we stop having review authority over historical changes in what we are determining as a historical district, then I think that that's where CHIPO will likely have a concern. Again, the question would be is if you are considered historical or not, and then whether you should fall under this standard or not. If you are in the Pickwa Caldwell Historic District by law, as the National Register of Historic Places, you are obligated under this code. Whether we enforce it or not is not a decision that we have, that's a national historic register. Our piece would be, I mean, the downtown, the portions that are, you know, there's certain areas that are not in Caldwell Historic, Pickwa Caldwell Historic District that, again, I don't know that we have any intention, but I understand the concept. I think we can certainly look at the language, modify it, and make it as reasonable as we can make it. I don't know that we can just remove, snip all of the language. I think we would have to understand how we can accommodate a reasonable solution.
So you're willing to sit down with Melanie and meet all her concerns? And John, Don Smith as well?
Not Don though, not Don, only Melanie. I'm not doing a...
He'd already agreed to meet with Don. I talked to him earlier.
So, so this, I, I know historic districts and declarations are, they're kind of at this like stack of national, state, and local. If, let's say I had a, a business downtown that was declared historic, and I put up purple Christmas lights in July, who is enforcing that? And what are they doing to me to get me to stop doing that?
So in this standard, we have penalties. So you know, that is an obligation that we have to the state to have this standard. There has to be penalties for people that decide not to follow those standards. So what exactly those penalties are, are if you're found in violation of the provisions, no work shall be performed, you have to cure the, the issue, and then you would be fined potentially a hundred dollars.
That once per day?
That's the standard, yeah, it's the standard minor, that may be a Mr. Patrizio question, but whatever the standard...
It would likely be a civil fine, so it would be a hundred dollars issued by the city.
That, that per day or a one-time hundred, per day?
Any other comments from citizens?
Jeff Grimes, ninety-three hundred State Route sixty-six. I wasn't going to comment on this because I don't own anything in the historical district, but you guys just admitted that you selectively enforce things in the city. What, what he just told us is, oh, well, you know, we may not enforce it, and we may. So if you don't like ya, you enforce them, and if you're, get along with the city, everything's peachy. He just, he just stated, we don't enforce them, but sometimes we do. He just, he just stated, we don't enforce them, but sometimes we do. So, that's kind of crazy.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Rick Walker, five-twenty-six North Wayne. I have a question on grants. It says in there that the city applies for the grants, and then may or may not work with the property owner for funding.
So, in the CLG program, there's two programs, both of which have to be applied for, through the city. So, that is, federal money always goes through the local government. I don't know why that is the law of the land, but federal money always goes through. So, what would happen in this scenario would be a property owner would say, I have a project, I'd like to do a half a million dollars in improvements, but I can't afford that. I would like to apply for a grant. And so then they would come to the city, and they would say, here's what I'm looking to do, how can I go through this process? And then they would be the applicant, we would be the partner in that application, and serve the need of the grant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks. No other questions, this will serve as a first reading. Next on the agenda is ordinance number O-four-twenty-four, a first reading.
An ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-two, Boards and Commissions.
Good evening.
Back again.
This, this ordinance, O-four-twenty-four, is an ordinance that modifies Chapter thirty-two, Boards and Commissions. It really modifies two sections. One, the Board of Zoning Appeals section, it adds our Board of Zoning Appeals to our list of Boards and Commissions. It lives in a different portion, it makes more sense to have it where all of our Boards and Commissions are. So, that is thirty-two oh-nine-five through thirty-two oh-nine-eight. All it does is take the exact language and move it into our Boards and Commissions section. And then thirty-two dot one-one-zero to thirty-two dot one-one-two would create this new board that we spoke about previously, the City Historic Review Commission. So, it has an establishment and membership section, an organization section, a powers section, and a power section, those three sections. I can go into detail on any of those components if you wish, but as I noted previously, the board would be made up of five members, plus one city commission member who would serve as an ex officio, non-voting member, so there'd be six members of the board. They are obligated to meet four times a year or more, depending on how many applications are before them. There's a chair and a vice chair, they do, they have to have three members for a quorum, it's the same standard language that we would have for any other board that we have, and their powers are relative to Chapter ninety-nine's creation, which are designated under that Chapter ninety-nine to see all the certificates of appropriateness, or to make designations for landmarks, local landmarks.
This doesn't affect the BZA?
The City Historic Review Commission does not. The BZA, it is centralizing it into our Boards and Commissions, so if somebody wants to go to our table of ordinances, and they want to see what boards we have, they will see that we actually have a BZA, even though we do, it just doesn't reflect it there.
Great. Any questions?
No.
Any questions from citizens? We'll serve that as a first reading. Last item on the agenda is ordinance number O-five-twenty-four, a first reading.
An ordinance to amend Title fifteen, Land Usage Pickwa Development Code.
Good evening.
Again.
Ordinance zero-five-twenty-four is the ordinance that is modifying our development code. So, as we spoke at the work session at our previous city commission meeting, our development code was adopted almost one year ago. This development code was a big change for the city, and it encompassed a number of large-scale changes. Over the last year, we have found that a lot of that is great, but some of it, as a living document, requires us to make some changes, and so we took this opportunity, as we needed to make changes for the CLG process, we took this opportunity to take all the other ones that we had kind of on our list, and put them together to talk through these changes to the development code that we've noticed over the last year. So, I will briefly go over each one of these changes, if you wish me to. I will go quickly, if you want me to slow down or to repeat, I'm more than happy to do so. So, the first is to modify the primary use table on page three-seven to add the use data center to industrial uses, which would be above the self-storage use. It would be a special use in the IL District and permitted in the IH District. The second would be to modify three-six-three-A-one, which has a error, there is an unfinished sentence that would be removed. The next would be to add three-six-nine, the data center definition, as, since it is a use, it has to have a definition. The next would be modifying four-seven-ten, which is, oh, excuse me, that was removed. The next is seven-one-one, which is to modify the Historic Preservation Section within our code. Again, that is because certificates of appropriateness are now being reviewed by the City Historic Review Commission. Modifying seven-one-two, Development Director, this modifies the definition of Development Director, since we at this point in time do not have an actual titled position of Development Director, it shall reference the Director of Community Services, or the other titled department head that has management authority over the Planning and Zoning Division. Modify seven-one-three, Board of Zoning Appeals. Again, now it states that the establishment is actually under Chapter thirty-two, those two sections for the codified ordinances. The next is to modify seven-one-four, the Planning Commission. It removes the section of C, which is the Historic Preservation Section entirely, from the purview of the Planning Commission, and moves it to the City Historic Review Commission. The next is seven-two-three, Special Use Permit. It modifies that special use permits for certificates of appropriateness are now reviewed by the City Historic Review Commission. Section seven-two-five, Development Permit. This is a note that we have had over the last year over development projects. The current code allows an administrative adjustment of fifteen percent to standards, numerical standards. This would allow for flexibility in that fifteen percent, to allow for administrative approval, to have that an equal value of a different standard. So, if fifteen percent were varied, then they would have to increase the different standard fifteen percent to make up for it. Again, it just provides some flexibility in that language. Seven-two-ten, Certificates of Appropriateness. It removes that entire section and replaces it with the statement that certificates of appropriateness are reviewed and approved by the City Historic Preservation Commission per Chapter ninety-nine. And last but not least, deals with zoning verification letters. This is a super unique thing that not many people do, but the people that do, do it, do it a lot. And so, we have found the amount of staff time that is dealt with for zoning verification letters, we actually can't even mail out the cost for what we are, do. Currently, it's ten dollars per parcel, and we are recommending that we raise that to thirty dollars per parcel, to allow us to cover our costs. We still will not cover our costs, but we will get a little closer. That's it. That was extremely fast, I know. I can go back through any one of those if you wish to have additional discussion on any of those proposed changes.
How much would cover the cost if that needed?
So, it takes, it takes one of our staff members thirty minutes or more, and then on top of that, we have to mail generally out, and now with the cost of a stamp not being fifty cents anymore, everything has become a little more challenging. When it, somebody requests something digitally, it's a lot easier, and it is actually more efficient for us, but we are not, we are not able to make that, we can't force someone to ask us digitally.
Right.
So, if they ask us by mail, then we're still obligated to do it, and this way, it covers us.
Actually, I meant, thirty doesn't, you said thirty doesn't get us to the match point, right? What would get us to the match point?
I think what we figured was like thirty-two dollars, and so it wasn't worth making it thirty-two dollars, that seems silly, so we just, you know, again, we provide services, right? I mean, our goal in our department is to provide services to people who need those services, but we have to make sure that the costs of those services are being covered. And that's, again, it's a very unique situation. The majority of people that ask us for zoning verification letters are realtors, or developers, or people who have very specific questions about our community. I don't know that we have ever received one that I'm aware of from a resident, or anyone like that. It is much more of a corporate request, a lot of lenders require them. So, it, again, it just becomes a way to cover our costs for those requests.
Okay.
Any questions? Any questions from citizens? That will serve then as a first reading on that ordinance. Next, we have City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I have one item on my report this evening, and that is to remind everybody of the open house at the Pickwa Public Safety Training Center, Thursday from four to six P.M. We'll have both law enforcement and fire out there doing some activities and demonstrating the facility. That's end my report.
Any questions from Commissioners, the City Manager? Nope, okay. Commissioners' comments, let's start with Commissioner Vetter.
Thank you. As usual, I have a little list of things. A reminder that the next meeting for the Friends of the Hands Pavilion will occur this coming Thursday, the eighteenth, seven o'clock at the YMCA, and the central topic will be ADA compliance issues for that facility. So, if you're able, please join us for that, we'll be in the Activity Center for the YMCA. Just a reminder that, again, as we get into more of spring, we're all cutting grass and doing yard waste and those things, and we want to make sure that you dispose of those things properly, and don't cause anybody to serious kinds of accidents because of sliding on grass in the street and those kinds of things. So, just be courteous, and use an appropriate bag, and the city will remove that for us. We continue to work with the sanitation department about the proper use and storage of trash, receptacle, and again, if you have concerns for addresses where you think maybe that's not being handled well, they are attaching door hangers and things to help people gain some appropriation, gain some appreciation for, for how that works. We're continuing to look for someone to help us expand our spay and neuter program for cats, and so if a person is interested in doing that, they could contact me or the City Manager's Office, and we could proceed with that. We got a nice press release about the Fourth of July celebration, which is going to be moved to the Pickwa Center, so more information will come about that, but I think that's going to be an information, a good information thing. I continue to be very interested in the home buyers' information. The city has a website to talk about that, good opportunity for folks, and I think we have to give up the old assumptions that you have to live in a certain district to get that, or you have to have some other kinds of criteria. It is a pretty open system, and again, a couple of local lending institutions are working with that, and so we encourage you to access the city's website and contact us if you need more assistance with that. Just wanted to say a final thank you. I know that the city had their Downtown Eclipse event, and we also had an event out at the Johnson Farm and Indian Agency. We had four hundred people from several states who came in to participate and enjoy that experience, and so it was, it was a nice event, and I'm glad it worked out well for everyone. I think the date for the next meeting for the hydraulic canal is twenty-fifth, I think, Paul? Twenty-fifth is the date for the Hydraulic Committee meeting, I believe?
That's correct, five o'clock.
Five, okay. And the last thing I always say is, I have a, I have a project where I try to encourage people's behavior to improve, and I say that good neighbors do not do, they do not do loud noise, and so I think for, if you've ever lived in a place where you can hear the lyrics of a song from across the street or down the block, that's probably too loud, and noise ordinance can be enforced, but I just think as a nice courtesy, it means that we hold down our noise and follow the instructions on that, so that's, I will yield at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons?
Hey, good evening. I'm going to give a big amen to what, one of the things that Commissioner Vetter just said, as a former motorcycle rider, if you're doing your lawn, that outside strip, make the thing blow to the inside of the yard. I've had friends seriously wreck, and one of them pass away because they hit grass in the street. So, I always, I'm very careful when I mow my lawn. Let's see, other than that, not a heck of a lot going on. I am investigating on setting up a test team, because I've had a bunch of folks already asking me to do another radio class, so I know that's not part of city business, but the folks that have gone on to get their licenses have already stepped forward and started doing community service for us, so I praise their efforts. Anyway, that's all I have for...
Thank you. Commissioner Holman?
My question would be for Mr. Oberdorfer, the City Manager. Could, we've had a lot of high rain events the past few weeks here. I know as a former member of the Utilities Board, that Mr. Cranny has been doing a lot of work to try to seal up the storm sewers, try to prevent them from flooding into the sanitation sewer, so that we can save some money on the water treatment plant. And then we also just have a lot of water features in the area. I was wondering if maybe by the next commission meeting in three weeks, or maybe the meeting after, if Mr. Cranny would have enough data, and he could do a kind of a presentation on how did we do, have we seen a, we spent all, you know, we spent some money on, you know, doing the smoke tests and things of that nature, try to seal it up, and I know he had said that we had to wait for a big rain event to really see if that worked, so I was wondering if maybe this was the, that time, if we could get a report on, you know, were those improvements, did they actually, were they noticeable, and how did our water features fare? You know, did we, did we overfill echo, you know, how was the river, how were the banks? Is there any potential problems or leaks, or anything that was of note with that? And then my other statement would just be, I had asked you last week a question about how much money the city was spending, or paying to the Miami Conservancy District off of city-owned property, and you had a very prompt and very specific answer for that, which prompted a conspiracy theory online that you and I had pre-planned and colluded with that question, and I'm here to admit that, yeah, we did pre-plan and collude on that question, because my goal was to get an answer from you, so that the public would know what the answer to that question was, so I gave you a heads-up that I was going to be asking you that, and allowed you to answer in a public forum on the record for everybody to see, so that, you know, instead of trying to get a gotcha moment, we actually got some real information out to the citizens. And so, yeah, so from time to time, the Commissioners will pre-stage those questions with the City Manager, so that he has time to do the proper research and answer the question, because we're up here looking for answers, not for gotchas. And that is concluding my comment for tonight, thank you.
All right. My comments are that as we get closer to warmer and warmer weather, be careful of motorcycle riders, people on bicycles, get out and enjoy the weather. Looks like we're going to have pretty good weather the rest of this week, so get out and get a chance to enjoy it. And with that said, we'll move next to public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the City Commission on agenda items. Comments are requested to be limited to five minutes. Please state your name and address.
I'm pretty sure you know who I am. I just want to say publicly that I cannot wait to recall each one of you getting a new commission, so we, the people, can get rid of the City Manager, Paul Oberdorfer. I will personally go door-to-door if need be. If you want to help organize or share this information, or learn more about the recall for the commission, send an email to safepickwa@gmail.com. We need to get rid of this City Manager and change our local form of city government, because this is not it. This is a joke, you all are a joke, you are clowns, and anyone who entertains a clown is part of the circus. I refuse to entertain clowns, so I'm out of here, clowns.
Good luck.
Glad you're here. Glad you're here.
Thank you for your comment. Next?
I guess I should have a bozo nose on. Anyways.
Your name?
Eva Silver, three nineteen-third. Saturday, we are having a cleanup, because instead of just bashing our community, we're going to do something with it like we do every year. So, Saturday, we're meeting at Roosevelt Avenue. We're going to be working our way from the bike path opposite way from Kroger's. Laura and Kaiser will be helping me with that. Joe Wilson and I have some programs going on, and we're still looking for any residents that need help with their yard or home exterior work code violations, things of that nature. Our community is not as bad as people would like to make it out to be. I do recall, and I think everybody can recall, we had, what, a hundred and fifty-two volunteers last year? That helped with code violation, that helped with getting things moving up off the ground for elderly, our senior citizens, those that couldn't afford it. We have multiple sources of funding that's available. I think it is just how you want to align yourself with the city, if you want to be positive, or you want to be circumventive on criticism. I'm not doing this for TikTok or YouTube views. I'm doing this because this is my home, this is my community, and although the fourteen cents per view may sound thrilling to some, it's the reality that the rest of us live in. And that reality is, Mr. Vedder's, we've had our differences as well, Vedder's and I've had words, however, I can freely, openly speak to you guys and say what I need to say, have it addressed. If it's not addressed, I move on to the next person. I don't think belittling anyone is an adult conduct or behavior. It's funny to get tissy now and then and have a fit, but when it's your overall personality, it just becomes annoying after a while. So, I'm kind of just annoyed with everything at the City Commission, and not the Commissioners themselves, but the three-ring circus that has been the last couple of months. And I think a lot of our community is, I'm getting that from not one group, but several people in other groups that are willing to come out, they're willing to be supportive, they're willing to help, they're anxious to help, and instead of doing something negative, turn it into a positive. So, that's all I have, and I hope to see everybody on Saturday.
What do I wear, and do I need to bring any tools?
The good thing about our community, contrary to popular belief, you know, is that we have this utility shed that anybody that is a citizen is able to use. It holds shrub, lawnmowers, weed eaters, shovels. We use it a lot. I normally bring a first aid kit. The most I tell anybody is, use your common sense, you know, look for the weather, if we are going to be in the woods, make sure you have gloves, make sure, you know, got some extra socks on, ticks are pretty bad this year. The sanitation department has always been wonderful as far as me being able to work out something to where we take it to a one-centered location, and they come pick it up. And they normally are, if we do a weekend cleanup, that pickup is normally that very next Monday. They do not let it linger there, just because it will get dragged back out. But that is it, and we will all be at the bike path where Roosevelt and sets in between wood and water, and we'll be out there, and hopefully, we'll get out there next weekend to.
Are you looking at the community trailer?
We are going to be there at ten o'clock in the morning. Now, we may have run into Sunday, sometimes we do do that. It just depends when we get into the area, how many volunteers we have, and how long that normally starts taking us. Last year, the weather was extremely cold, and we had quite a bit of a larger area. We did the field that was privately owned, just because it had become a problem. There are some businesses in that general area. I've spoken to Chris, and I know Co-Compliance is aware of it, because they are businesses, there are certain things that we can't remove, but they do need to remove, so the city's on that with addressing those issues for us, so that's where we're at.
Thank you.
And we talk about the spay and neuter thing, a lot of those cats are housed out there.
I'm sorry, can you read?
And we talk about the spay and neuter thing, and that area is where a lot of those cats are housed, and there's a lot of trash that they're getting into, and it's getting stuck on to their face, their paws. We was out there mushroom hunting, and one had a piece of plastic wrapped around its paw.
Ten seconds.
So, just be aware.
Thank you.
Nicholas Smart, fourteen thirty-three Covington Avenue.
Hello, Mr. Smart.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm doing well. How about you?
Good, sir.
Okay. Last time I was up here, we talked about STAN-TAC contract. Was that brought before commission and the citizens, and when?
Kevin Cranny's out with us today to answer that question. I can look into it, and it'll be a response, it'll be in the key section of the Next Agenda packet.
Okay, Next Agenda Packet, you say? Okay. We had a concern over firefighter fighting gear with flame retardants being used in our source water supply. Has that been addressed?
No. I haven't heard anything about it.
They said they practiced in our source water before, which was kind of alarming, because I'd never heard that before. That was during the work session that we all had with the fire department present.
Yeah.
When they do rope rescue, I guess you could say, I think those ropes do have flame retardants on them, and other gear that they're getting into the water with is treated with flame retardants. So, that is a huge concern.
Okay, so we can ask Kevin if that can be screened out of the water, even though it's source water, once it goes through our water treatment system, if that stuff gets filtered out, we can ask that question.
Okay. The fact that having to use restrictive signage on the path or in the parks is by and in within itself an admittance that the fire training facility is in conflict with its surroundings, a nuisance to the taxpaying public, an impedence to enjoy the parks, recreation in a manner for which they were intended, which is relaxation, enjoyment, and recreation. Would you agree, not agree? How do you feel on that? How do you feel on that, Mr. Oberdorfer? Do you agree with that statement?
I just don't understand the relevance of the question.
The relevance of the question?
Because the signs are put up for compliance, safety compliance, and I don't understand what that has to do with the.
Yeah, I would still consider the fact that you're putting up signage at all, or even to have to make signage at all, print signage up. I would say that it is, self-admittedly, a conflict of interest with the surrounding parks and recreation. Like, if you can't cross beyond this point, when there's firefighting training going on, all that other stuff was grandfathered in well prior to any firefighting training facility, okay? So, that should be allowed to be used without any impedance.
So, when we do path maintenance, the path will be closed down for a period of time, and it's no different than doing maintenance on the trail, closing a trail?
No, 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 no. The fire training facility is a difference than any maintenance issue on the trail.
Can I respond?
Yeah.
So, okay, so, the fire training facility will still be subject to nuisance laws, which is, we found that out with the Hampshire Cabinets. If it does create a nuisance, ignoring the signs for a second, that still is not compliant with what it's allowed to do. So, if we happen to notice that there's a nuisance, then that's going to end up causing a change in protocol, or maybe even a total review of its existence to start with. Now, as for the signs, I believe that I brought up that I wanted to have signs, and the reason I did that is because I believe that we weren't required to have signs.
Thirty seconds.
And my point in having the signs was not to warn of a health concern, but to warn of an optics concern, that when people were walking by, they weren't, oh, my gosh, there's a building on fire, I need to call nine-one-one, that they had some acknowledgement that there was something definitely happening.
I don't agree with restrictive signage. I would agree with some type of signage that says, enter at your own risk, that puts the onus on the individual rather than the, you know, the facility.
Five minutes.
And the facility itself being an admittance, being an impedence.
Thank you, time's up. But thank you for your questions. I will get an answer.
Can I get more time?
No, I'm going to get an answer for you, but I will talk to you afterwards, if you don't have a problem with that. I got something I want to tell you.
Sounds good.
Jeff Grimes, ninety-three hundred State Route sixty-six. Once again, no burning anything ever at this land. It is pristine. So, the previous commission meeting, my character was personally attacked by Commissioner Homan, that you didn't believe me. So, now, you come up with this stuff, maybe you kind of believe me a little bit now about the skids and stuff. So, I did a little bit more research for you. So, just burning wood, okay? You want to burn so much stuff out there, so bad. I don't understand it. Did you do any more research? No? Okay. Smoke forms when wood or other organic matter burns. The smoke from wood burning is made up of a complex mixture of gases and fine particles, also called particle pollution, particulate matter, or PM. In addition to particle pollution, wood smoke contains several toxic air pollutants, including benzene, formaldehyde, acrylene, and, excuse me, but this is a long word, polysilic aromatic hydrocarbons. So, you're burning this stuff, and it's poison. The damage, environmental damage, particles would be carried over long distances by wind and then settle on the ground or water. Depending on the chemical composition, the effects of this settling may include making lakes and stream acidic, changing the nutrient balance in large river basins, depleting the nutrients in soil, damaging sensitive forests and farm crops, affecting the diversity of the ecosystem, and contributing to acid rain effects. Do you believe me? Okay, so I'm going to take it as you believe me now. So, another question, because nobody ever answers my question from the previous commission meetings, but, so this one, we're going to try to do a recall, and if three Commissioners get recalled, who gets to appoint the Commissioners? Does anybody know that? Commissioners appointed you, am I not correct? So, if we recall three of you, there would only be two. So, who gets to choose who would be in the, anybody know that answer?
Frank.
Okay, so nobody can answer my question, and I'm wasting my time. So, then, somebody said that, wow, we're using the water in Pickwa, and it's, we shouldn't be using the water in Pickwa to wash our clothes. Would you guys truck us in water if you don't think it's safe?
I drink the water.
Yeah, but that's not you. I got, I got two words for anybody who trusts the water testing. Ready for these two words? Flint, Michigan. Two more words for anybody that trusts the OEPA or RAPCA, East Palestine, Ohio. Excuse me, but I don't, I don't believe anything. The OEPA and RAPCA are complicit in letting this stuff happen in our town, and I refuse to let anything be burned out there. Look up, look up, if you want to do some research. Look up what this stuff does to people, and you're going to let it frickin' go on. The size of particles is directly linked to their potential for causing health problems. Small particles less than ten micrometers in diameter pose the greatest problems, because they can get deep into your lungs, and some may even get into your bloodstream. Exposure to such particles can affect both your lungs and your heart. Numerous scientific studies have linked particle pollution exposure to a variety of problems, including premature death in people with heart or lung disease, non-fatal heart attacks, irregular heartbeat, aggravated asthma, decreased lung function, increased respiratory symptoms such as irritation of the airways, cough, or difficulty breathing. How much more do you guys got to listen to to stop this frickin' burning out there?
Thank you.
Mayor, a few questions that were directed at me, if.
What was that?
Will you truck me in water for my restaurant? What am I supposed to do?
Have a seat. Have a seat, please. Mr. Grimes, please have a seat. Thank you.
So, I did not respond to the questions that were directed at me during Mr. Grimes's presentation, because I didn't want to interrupt him, as I've been accused of doing last week. But you had asked if I believed him, and my answer remains, I don't believe you. And the reason why is because God gave you the inalienable right to speak your mind, but He left it to you to maintain your credibility, which you have failed to do so. And so, I can't take your word on anything, because you don't have any credibility.
Have a seat, please. No yelling from the back. Please have a seat. I've asked, I've asked you twice, please. Next?
Tom Hudson, six zero eight North Downing Street. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor.
Good evening, former mayor.
Glad to be here. I'm proud to announce, and I'm representing the Pickwa Central Class of nineteen seventy-three, in announcing that we are going to be honoring a fellow classmate, Admiral Phil Weiscup, who graduated with us in nineteen seventy-three. His father, Dr. Weiscup, was the Pickwa City School Superintendent at the time. Bill McCullough retired in nineteen seventy-three, our senior year, and he appointed Phil to the Naval Academy. And so, he was also the last person to fill, to nominate, and the only person ever to make flag officer. So, just to give a quick history of how Pickwa honors its war veteran and dead, we've done a wonderful job. And I've done a little bit of research, it's not final, so this isn't, I've worked a little bit with Andy Height, but we're all aware of Admiral Stephen Rowan over there in Shawnee. He was a Civil War Admiral, came to the United States as a young boy. We have next, General William P. Orr, World War One. In his story, his name's all over Pickwa, and he's quite prominent out there at the cemetery. And then, just recently, in the Pickwa History Page, there was General Kenneth Benner, Brigadier General, World War Two. And then, last that I'm aware of, and again, I might be missing somebody, we have Admiral James Phil Weiscup. He graduated the Naval Academy nineteen seventy-seven, and he served thirty, thirty-six-year distinguished career and retired in two thousand thirteen as three-star Vice Admiral. I checked at the time, and there were six hundred thousand people in the Navy, he was ranked in the top fifty. And I've been wanting to do something to honor him, and several years ago, I said something to him, and very humbly, he said, really? Why would you do that? And he was, it was just his nature. He served in Operation Desert Storm and Enduring Freedom, and a few commands held, and I'll get to my point. He was Director of the Situation Room at the White House, commands held, CO of the USS Callahan Destroyer Squadron Twenty-One, Head of Naval Forces Korea, Strike Group Seven, Commander of the Ronald Reagan, President of the Naval War College, his last job, retired in two thousand thirteen, Inspector General of the Navy. So, we are going to, I'm announcing, May twenty-fifth, we are having an Honor Gardens, a Weiscup Honor Gardens Ceremony out in front of Pickwa High School, and it's going to be in the grassy knoll section between the two parking lots. Senators Vance and, who's the other gentleman up in Cleveland?
I know Vance.
Yeah, I know Vance.
Who's the other one? Who's our other Senator?
Brown.
Yeah, Senator Sherrod Brown's been invited. Both of them have been invited. Brown said he's coming. Brown said he's coming. I have not got a yes or no on the other. State Senator Steve Huffman will be here. Wade Westphal from the city for the county, and Chris will be out there for a proclamation. And so we're going to have, there's going to be a track day going on there, out there as well, so it's going to be a very busy day. So we're going to have about a 45-minute ceremony to an hour, and that will start at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 25th. The night before, he will be speaking at commencement at Pickwa Central High School for a 10-minute talk. So I've been promoting this with all my classmates, and I'm asking now the City of Pickwa, we are still accepting donations for this garden that we're doing. It's quite elaborate. I'll be glad to fill in more people on details, but my phone number is 937-418-9199. My email is tdhudson20@gmail.com. You can contact me, and I'll be glad to fill you in on more details.
And can you send me the information that you compiled on, on him so that we can add that to the proclamation?
Right, but I also encourage the public to Wikipedia Phil Weiscup, and it lays out his entire life. And of course, the first thing it says, born in Pickwa. He was gone for a few years. His father moved up in the education ranks. He moved back to Pickwa in eighth grade, and we were classmates from that point on.
30 seconds.
So I just want to appreciate your time tonight and invite the City of Pickwa to support this event and tell as many friends as you can what a wonderful event we have planned and to honor one of Pickwa's finest.
Very positive. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive.
Thank you.
Earlier, they were talking about the Smart Hub and stuff. We didn't get a chance to talk. Anyways, this has something to do with that.
That was a work session.
Work session, okay. And I don't even know if it's something that you guys can do or not, but my question is, the whole reason we got the smart meters and stuff for the water and the electric, which isn't necessarily good for our health, but one of the things in the advertisements about getting it was it was going to help us as constituents see if we had any running water or areas where we could fix. Currently, it is nice to see a comparison last year and this year, but I was able to talk to, I think it was RJ, RJ was here earlier, and he was able to send me like an hour-by-hour usage, and it was very helpful. And being that we have electronic data, is there any way that we can see, we can get that information?
Did he say that Smart Hub, you can go to the 15-minute increments? I thought he said that.
Did he say that?
Yes.
Is that something?
You can view, yes.
Today? Okay, because he sent that, and he, well, okay. I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, see, I haven't looked at it yet, but I think you can view that in the 15-minute increments.
Okay, well, that's helpful because one night for two hours, my toilet was running.
Did they tell you, or you just, you didn't see it? You didn't catch it?
No, when I was talking to him, he sent me the data, and he said it's hard to parse this stuff, and it's, it was only like three weeks ago or two weeks ago, so.
That's nice.
But anyways, the toilet was running, and it ran like, I don't know, 60 gallons or, yeah, 60 gallons an hour. And it's important for us to know that because, I mean, that's expensive. And then also that the water is from, from start point to end point with a minimum. So it's a bummer if you're one, one person, right, using, I don't know, say 30 gallons or whatever, and then you got a family that's using 60, but in the end, if you're only using one unit, you're both paying the same amount, whereas it would be nice to be a quantity, a different minimum or something like that, so we're not paying so much. Also, do we have any new information on the tap water standards or contaminants or anything? Just as a standard?
I think that report just came out. I think it's available online.
Okay, can you give me that address?
The federal standards report, I think, just came out.
The federal is out, yes.
Is it from EWG?
No, that, it's, the federal guidelines will not be on that website.
Okay, okay, you just mentioned federal, is it from the federal?
The drinking water standards originate from the federal government.
Okay. This is something from EWG, if you type in, I think, something about Pickwa drinking water or something. This is just something EWG, I guess, is an independent. Anyways, this is old information. It showed that 14 different guidelines were, or 14 different contaminants exceeded their guidelines. But at the same time, it said that tap water provided from this water utility was in compliance with federal health-based drinking waters, which is very contradictory, right? Because the federal government has very low standards.
What's the date of that study?
I think it was from 2020.
Might I suggest, because that, that report, and we've, Mr. Crainey's done a white paper on that to talk about the reporting and the way that that agency goes about collecting their data versus what the reality of the data that is submitted, and so I can have him put together something to report back out to you. And certainly, if you want to make an appointment to speak to him, that might be a better way to get clarification on it.
Well, I mean, it would be.
Utility board meeting as well. The utility board meetings are open to the public, and you could come to that and ask as well.
Okay. What, one of the things that's said on here is that just because it says it's legal doesn't necessarily mean that it's safe. So getting, passing grade from the federal government does not mean that the water meets the latest health guidelines. Federal government is going to be so lax, and we as a community should try to strive to be much better than that, so anyways, that's it. Thank you, guys.
Kim, thank you.
Mr. Oberdorfer, when Kevin posts together that report, can we have him put what the state standards, the federal standards, maybe more local standards, and then what our actual readings are so that we can kind of get a good baseline for, for compliant and how compliant we are?
I'm sure you'd be happy to do that for us.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.